We've got the recording on, so yeah, we've got another minute, but I just want everybody to know the recording is on.
Say something incriminating?
Right.
Oh, I could do that.
You're not allowed to talk about John.
Hey, it's seven o'clock.
Yep, it is exactly seven o'clock.
All right, um, John, we all set?
Yes, you are. Everything's all set and ready to go.
Okay, um, this is the Barrington Zoning Board of Adjustment. As Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing the Microsoft team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone: 1-603-644-0240, and conference ID 542261940, or call 603-664-0330, or email jhuckins@barrington.nuhanshion.gov, or bit.ly/barrb2007115. Today is Wednesday, July 15, 2020, and it's seven o'clock, 7:01. And please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call votes. So I'm going to call the roll call. Mary Schmalk.
Here.
Cheryl Huckins.
Here.
Ray Damaris.
Here.
And George Bailey.
Here.
Okay, we're now going to call, uh, the first action matter we have is an action item continued from June 17, 2020, and it's 250-101-NR-20-ZBA, the owner James Secocha. Is the applicant present online or through Teams?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Secocha, um, we received a letter, and I just, do you want to go over what the letter says?
Uh, yep, pretty much. This is the overview narrative of the accessory dwelling. I'm seeking the board's guidance as I've gone back and done more research, and I think I've found a reasonable compromise. Uh, I reached out to my builder, um, to see if the accessory dwelling would be more feasible on the left-hand side of the house, and it's actually going to add an additional 20 to 25% of the project up, which is $30,000. Um, in the letter I wrote, uh, hopefully everybody's got a copy. I'm sorry I got it out late. But additional to the $30,000, uh, site work and septic is going to be 20 grand. Uh, trench for electrical will be 5,000. Tree removal, um, for, because the electrical goes right up the driveway underground, um, so it would damage the root systems there. Um, new electrical service, uh, most of you know I'm an electrician, so I didn't put my price on it. I had somebody else come out and give me a quote. Um, new driveway, since, you know, the electrical runs underneath, and that's going to be 25,000, and that was from KC Paving. Grand total of the extra cost to the project, if it were going to go to the left side of the house, is $90,700. Um, doesn't include any design or print changes or, um, stuff like that. So the cost to go to the right side of the house will be about 150,000. Um, that's what I have a budget. That's, that's all I can afford really at this point. Um, so the total cost to go to the left side of the house would be $240,700, um, which I just bought this house. Um, I don't really think I can afford to build another one right next to it. Um, and that's kind of how that price is reflected. But before incurring additional design costs or surveying, designing prints, um...
Richard Kelsey.
I've resigned.
He's now joining.
I revised the original footprint. The, because as we talked, um, I was not accepted at the 28 feet by 32 feet. Um, so what I did do, um, was I decreased the 28 down to 26, and I moved that two feet, and I added it on to the 32. So I'm proposing to build a 26 by 34 accessory dwelling. Um, the closest part of this ADU would be 10 foot from the boundary. I'm seeking the board's guidance to see if these dimensions will work. Um, also, in addition, um, it's just been crazy on my part here, and I apologize, but I've spoken to both neighbors immediately on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, we have Terry and Cheryl Hill, and I spoke with Terry, and he's more than willing to write a letter if that helps the board's decision, um, at the next meeting. And the Bowens are to my left, and they are also willing to write a letter if that would help, um, with my case. So today, I'm really just, you know, seeking the board's, um, advice to see if this 26 by 34 structure would be okay, um, as I would get prints and drawings and submit them to you guys for next month to review for a final. Um, and, you know, I think you guys can kind of see the hardship, uh, trying to come up with a extra $90,000. I just, I can't, can't afford that, so.
Um, so the neighbors got notice, right, of the hearing?
Correct.
Um, any questions from any of the board members? Uh, this is a conservation subdivision, so the requirements are 20-foot sides setbacks.
So then, so it would be at 10 feet, so it'll be halfway?
Yep. Yep.
Well, I think that what he's done already has, uh, warranted our reconsideration to, uh, to move forward with this. Like Ray has just mentioned, it's, it's almost a half the distance required for the setback. So other than that, that's all I could see on it, Madam Chair.
Yep. Um, any, any questions for the applicant?
No, not at this time.
No.
Cheryl?
No.
No.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Um, hearing none will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and the board can discuss the situation. Anybody?
Well...
George.
Thank you very much, Ray. I, I looked at, uh, some of the site work costs he puts on there, and it really is astronomical, uh, to do it, and I think because of he's, uh, downsizes the actual size of the house, uh, to make it fit, I think that careful consideration from the, uh, board should be given. Thank you.
I agree with George. I agree with George, and it's an improvement, and if he can find a little bit more, I think that would be more favorable as well, so, but...
I agree.
Hey, um, Mr. Secocha, do you want to, um, you've heard most of the board. Cheryl, do you want to comment at all?
No, no, he's, he's moved it. I mean, he's, you know, he's reduced the size of the addition, so...
Yep. So, Mr. Secocha, if you want to continue this and bring in, um, Prince, we can't vote on anything until we have a plan in front of us, because fortunately, sometimes people come in and make representations, and then they don't actually put things where they said they're going to, so that we have adopted a policy that we have to have a plan that shows all of the setbacks, um, on it.
Understood. I just wanted to reach out before I just spent, you know, probably extra money to, to get it revised, so that's all I was asking.
Yep. It's the, where's the septic system on here too, because I don't see it on the plan?
The septic system is right immediately behind the house.
Right behind the house? I see the leach field.
Yep, it's right there. It was back when they made you do the raised septics.
Uh, leach field and a septic is the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, they're the same thing? All right, okay. All right, um, so if you want to continue, is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue this until the next meeting for Mr. Secocha.
I'll second.
Okay, um, Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary? Yes.
George?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll continue it to next month. Um, I think I'm pretty clear that the board will, I think you talked about reducing it so it's 10 feet from the side setback, and that would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
Town. See you, guys.
Oh, well.
So the next matter is, um, it's a request for rehearing from the May 20, 2020 meeting. Uh, the procedure is, is that if we grant the request for rehearing, that it's reheard at the next meeting, okay? This is just the motion. We've been provided with a motion. Um, is the applicant present online? Is counsel present? Do you want to address anything in addition to what's already written?
Is now exiting.
Yeah, this is Eric Mayer, um, counsel for Richard Kelsey, who is also on. Um, I think the motion is fairly self-explanatory. Um, I can provide the board with a brief summary of the motion if it feels like it would be helpful. Otherwise, you know, I, I think, you know, it's a fairly thorough motion. I, I don't want to belabor the points. So if it's a sensitive, I'm happy to just provide sort of a, a brief Reader's Digest version of the motion itself.
Well, it's, I don't want to, well, why don't we see what the board wants to do? What is, um, what is the...
Do we typically have testimony with a rehearing request?
Oh, that's right. We don't typically have it. You've already submitted a motion for rehearing. We'll just discuss it. Um, what's the board's thoughts?
Uh, I think the motion personally makes our argument for us. I mean, they're talking, we denied solar panels because we didn't want them pumping water, and the whole argument in the motion is to pump water so they can take showers and wash dishes, and where's this wastewater going? So my feeling is, well, we're, we made...
I thought the motion was to keep it a rustic cabin. I thought that was the reason to deny solar.
Correct.
Correct. I mean, we would never grant this property, uh, building on this property today. It's only there because it's been there for a long time, so, and we agreed it should stay as it is.
Right.
If I may just add a point of clarification.
No, 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 we don't, excuse me, Attorney Mayor, uh, Mr., um, our member was correct that we don't allow public testimony at a decision on whether to do a rehearing.
I, I know. I just heard something. It just got misconstrued from my leading.
Let me, let me, yeah, let me, let me go, let me go through it, okay? So this is not, let me just talk about, this is not a motion to leave it as a rustic thing. Is there somebody talking? Um, what has basically happened is they filed a motion for rehearing on the... They filed a motion for rehearing on the grounds that, um, any restrictions that we place have to be related to the reasons behind why the property, uh, why the... Is somebody talking?
There should be, okay.
Somebody's had you on a cell phone.
Don, I can hear you talking. Could you please, um, not talk into the phone for a minute?
Sorry, sorry about that.
Or mute it. You can mute your... Thank you. So anyways, what the motion says is that, um, that we need to, um, that any restrictions that we place on the use of the property have to be related to the reasoning behind, um, the ordinance and why it is. I think that we should grant a rehearing. We can either, even if we rehear the case, if we still come to the same conclusion, then we could make clear our reasons for the reason, for the restrictions that we placed on it. That way, if it goes on appeal, the judge has a very clear record of what we contemplated. So there's two reasons. Either, the purpose of asking for a rehearing, the requirement as to why, um, applicants have to ask for a rehearing before they go to court, is to allow the zoning board of adjustment to make sure that its record is clear. And I think that, to the extent that there are reasons for the restrictions that we placed on it, that we should make our record very clear.
I would agree with Karen on that.
I agree, totally agree, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also agree with what you're saying.
So is there a motion to grant the rehearing, at which point it will be heard at our next meeting?
I make a motion, we grant the rehearing?
Second, I, Bailey.
Okay, I'm going to call the roll. Ray, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. So we'll have a rehearing on this at the next meeting. Uh, the last case is a new case.
Thank you, everybody.
It is case number 262-53-GR...
Richard Kelsey.
Is now exiting.
SLWD-20-ZBA variance, and it's Kingfisher Bait Company LLC. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is not present, but his attorney is, Don Whiteman.
Do you want to make the presentation?
I'd be happy to. Is that my clue to start?
Yep, go ahead.
All right. Um, all right, well, I have, uh, set forth in my basis for granting the variance, a summary of the reasons that we think that this is granting, and the variance requested would be appropriate. Um, the, the hard nut to crack here, to be honest with you, is the, is the, uh, is the hardship issue. Uh, but we think that, uh, we can qualify and meet the requirements. As I point out in my request for granting the variance, first of all, the proposed use of the property is reasonable. We have a, uh, almost 1,800-foot square three-car garage over which the client proposes to, uh, construct a 1,200, uh, by, well, 12 by, a 1,200, 12-foot, uh, apartment for use exclusively by himself and his wife. Uh, the, uh, the client is a, is a fisherman who spends approximately six months of the year at sea, and they would occupy this as a home, uh, he and his wife, uh, during the, the off-season. Uh, his son occupies the, the main house, uh, with his family. The, as, as you all know, the requirement, uh, limits the size of the dwelling to be, uh, the ADU to be 750 square feet. Uh, 750 square feet over an almost 1,800-square-foot garage just doesn't, doesn't make any sense, and it doesn't really meet the needs of, of the family. The, um, uh, uh, the applicant's wife is a, is a handicapped person, which does require some special attention to things like the width of doorways and, uh, other amenities, bathrooms, special fees, and whatnot. Um, we think that the 1,200, uh, 12-foot, square-foot apartment over the 1,800-foot garage is making some kind of sense, and, uh, that it would be useful to them to be able to occupy it as, uh, as, uh, a place, a safe place for his handicapped wife. The, um, uh, the granting of the variance, we believe, would not be injurious to the public or private rights of, of other people, as I pointed out in my summary. Uh, and the, the limitation on size of an ADU appears to reflect the, uh, the want of the town to not overuse, uh, uh, ADU dwellings and not to add to the, um, a burden which the town has on, on any additional structure. In this case, it would not be increasing the, the burden on the schools or services of any kind, as a matter of fact. We think that the 1,200-square-foot, um, requirement, uh, could best be met by the kind of structures that we're proposing to erect. With the garage, uh, is structured, is structured in such a place that it kind of presents a unique problem. It, it barely meets the, uh, the setback requirements and can't be located elsewhere on the, on the, uh, on the property because of the location of the, the house itself. Uh, yeah, construction of the garage in any other place would have to be, uh, be with a, uh, an agreement to grant a variance. So we've got the garage, uh, in the only place where it can be located. We've got a 1,200-square-foot, uh, dwelling over the garage, and we think it's a reasonable use of the, of the, of the property and the garage building. Um, the other requirements of, uh, for meeting a variance, I summarize in my, uh, in my summary, and, uh, frankly, I think that those requirements do not present a problem. Uh, I think the hardship is in that here, and this is what the board, I believe, has to decide. We think the 750-foot limitation over an 1,800-square-foot garage really doesn't make sense, uh, and that the, uh, construction of a, an apartment house of 1,200 square feet over that 1,800-foot structure makes, makes a lot of sense. As I said, the other items, and I, I think we can qualify for, and I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have, but, uh, pretty much satisfied that we can meet those board requirements.
Are there any questions from the board members?
I have one.
Yes. I, I have, how would you get up to the second floor? Is there going to be a ramp or... Yeah, how is, how do you access the second floor?
You, hang on just a minute, I'm, I'm going to ask him. Hello? Yes, how will, how would you like to access that property?
They can get a building permit to put a deck beside that that goes up to the upstairs door.
I'm sorry, John, what was that?
They do, they do have a building permit out to build a deck that is levels of that second-floor door. I'm not sure how they're going to get up to the deck, though.
There, uh, you've just told me that the, uh, the exterior staircase is constructed so that there will be a ramp, a, uh, or a chairlift, uh, you know, extending up the, the, uh, the rail of the, uh, stair, stairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
George, did you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair, do I have a question for the gentleman?
Yes, sir.
The existing house, what's going to happen with the existing house that's already on the property?
His son is occupying the existing house and plans out for him to continue living there.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Chair, I'd like to bring to your attention Article 3.1.1. The article states on the zoning law, the, uh, uh, we cannot have two, uh, permit for construction. Uh, let's see, you can only have one living structure on that amount of property, because that's 1.97 acres. So that extra house, the way it's written in the zoning, it will be another residence upstairs, because with one, you're not allowed to have a second residence.
The accessory dwelling trumps that, and zoning, that's for accessory dwellings.
Yeah, it does.
Right, but it's at 750. Uh, John, let me ask you a question. So do we allow duplexes in town?
Duplexes are allowed, but you've got to have extra land to do so. Now, next, excuse me?
How many acres do you have to have for a duplex?
Okay, so you need 80,000 square feet for your first unit, which is your mother unit, and then you need an additional 4,000 square for one bedroom. If it's a bedroom or more, you need 80,000 extra, so you basically need 3.86 acres to have a true duplex, which could be of any size. But the accessory dwelling law that the state passed a couple of years ago says that you can't ask for additional acreage for the accessory dwelling, but you could limit the size of the accessory dwelling to not be any smaller than 750 square feet. So the planning board, when they brought it forward, brought it forward to where they could have it detached up to 750 square feet, and then attached up to 1,000 square feet, and that's what's in our zoning today.
That's correct. That's why we're asking for a variance.
My other question, Madam Chair?
Wait, wait, let me finish with John. Let me finish with John first. So, John, it was the planning board that recommended the 1,000, the 750 square feet, and they could have gone higher, right?
They could have gone higher. The, the state says you have to give at least 750 square feet, and you do have the right to make it so it's attached. This, uh, the planning decided to go up to 1,000 attached, and then 750 of it was detached. That was what they brought forward in zoning, and that's what passed.
And this garage is not attached to the house?
Correct.
Yep.
If the garage was attached to the house, you could have 1,000 square feet.
What is the reason? What is the reason?
Wait, 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 wait. Don, wait. Go ahead, George.
Yes, the, uh, existing, uh, building that they're planning on putting the, uh, apartment upstairs on, is that, has that building been permitted? Does it have a permit for the construction of that building?
It's not only was permitted, they already have a CO for the garage.
All right, thank you very much. That answers my question. Thank you, John.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
How long have they owned this house, Don?
I think they purchased it in 2017, yeah, 2017.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody, Ray?
No. Good.
We think, one of our pitches here is that, uh, because of the size, most places have a two, two-stall garage, and, and usually, uh, the dimensions are 20 by 20 feet, or 20 by 22 feet, or something like that. But this garage is, is, as the sketch shows, I believe, is 36 by 52 feet, so that it's capable of absorbing, I guess, a larger dwelling using, unit above it. And that's why we are asking for a variance that would allow us to commit the 1,200-square-foot structure addition.
Um, okay, so no other questions from the board?
No.
No.
Um, is there anybody else here to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none will close. Hearing done will close the public testimony portion of the meeting, and the board can discuss their thoughts. Anybody got thoughts?
I have a lot of them, but I don't dare put them out.
Ray, what's your thought?
I have a thought.
Cheryl?
When, what? I went to a meeting, I think it was one of those law classes, wasn't it, John? Where, when this was proposed and then it was enacted, you know, about the ADUs, and the intent for this was to provide a place for, like, children to have their aging parent live with them, or, you know, parents have their teenage kids or their college kids live with them, or, you know, their young, young kids live with them to get started out. Basically, it was to help families out, which it sounds like that's what's happening here, except 1,200 feet to me is close to a second house. It's not an accessory dwelling, it's, it's a, I mean, that would be a condo, and I don't know if we want to get into that. We want to start, you know, breaking our, our limits, you know, granting waivers like this on, on our limits to the accessory dwelling units. I'm not sure if it keeps to the spirit of what the accessory dwelling intent was.
Yep, yep.
My question is, sorry, Madam Chair, go ahead.
I was just going to raise the issue of hardship. Mr. Whittum brought that up at the front beginning of his conversation, and he acknowledges there's a difficulty. I don't know that there's a hardship anyway in this, because they have reasonable use of the land, it's not a unique piece of property, I, I don't see any hardship, and I, 1,200 is, like, increasing it by two-thirds, I don't know, two-thirds, not, yeah, increasing it by 76%, 70% of what's allowed.
I'm in agreement with both Cheryl and your arguments.
My, my question is, when I asked about the permit, I told they had a CO, but was, before the CO was issued, was that building put in at the, at the size that was allocated under our zoning?
You have a question for John?
Yes, please.
The CO that was issued, was issued just for the garage. They built the garage, then they come back, now they want another permit to create the accessory dwelling above the garage. So, the building itself is already up, it's up as a garage, it meets all the requirements as a garage. So, now they're asking for the accessory dwelling, which is over and above the existing building.
Got it.
Well, I, I, I think it's really pushing, pushing the envelope, that's what we're talking here amongst ourselves, and I'll, and I'll tell you, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, go with an ADU when there's not even a elevator going to be proposed, there isn't a chair rail lift being proposed from the ADU, and I just find it hard to, to see that on, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the ordinance requires it to be that, but I guess for me, the issue is the hardship and the land.
But under his, but if you read his thing, it says for a detached ADU dwelling.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, I'm looking, there's no requirement that there be, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just the individual criteria, not the, yeah, so it would be the criteria. There's no requirement that there be a lift or an elevator or anything like that in the ordinance. A maximum of one ADU per property is permitted and shall not exceed two bedrooms. Is there, is there a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to deny.
You're second?
I'll second.
All right, I'm going to take a roll call, Ray?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Mary?
No.
George?
No.
And I vote no.
Okay, just for clarity, the motion should be to approve, and then you're voting against it, because you voted not to approve it, so a no means you're approving it. That's, I just want to make sure you guys are clear.
Let's redo it.
For clarification, okay, why don't we revoke? Ray, how do you vote?
So, no?
No.
We're denying the motion for a variance, correct?
Right, you have to vote yes.
Yes, yes to deny, I'm sorry, yep.
Yes to deny, George.
Yes to deny, Mary.
Yes to deny, Cheryl.
And Karen, yes to deny. Okay, so, I'm sorry, but the request for the variance has been denied, and you'll get a notice in the mail?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
All right, thank you.
Yep, is there, anybody read the minutes?
Motion to approve, as written.
Second.
Is there a second? Well, all right, George, how do you vote?
Don Whittum.
Is now exiting.
Yeah, yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. Do we have anything else?
That's it.
Good call on that, on the hearing, Karen.
On what?
On the hearing, I agree with you.
Okay.
I can see what you're doing, yep. All right.
Most of you adjourned?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yep.
Bailey, I.
Ray?
Yes.
I. Yes, 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 yes.
Cheryl, yes, and I do. All right.
All right.
All right, bye. Bye, everybody. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Multiple people are now exiting.